I'll call this board of supervisors meeting to order, and as always, we're going to begin our meeting with the pleas of allegiance. And that will be led by Kendra Hayden, and we'll follow that with invocation by Tara Cross. And I solemn apologize for missing her name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for who you are to us individually. Thank you for who you are to us corporately as our God. Father, we come to you in this moment because we need your help. You are all-knowing, you know everything, and we need your wisdom. So, Father, I thank you, God, that in this room, in this moment, you are giving the wisdom of Solomon, you're giving the bravery of David, you're giving the heart even of you that is full of compassion. Father, I also thank you that we know in Scripture, it tells us that there are many plans that a man has, but at the end of the day, the purpose of you, you, Lord, will stand. So, Father, what we ask in this moment, we may have come in here with our own ideas and our own things that we wanted to happen, but, Father, we ask in this moment, just like you said on the Sermon on the Mount, thy kingdom come, and your will be done. Father, if your will is done, then everything we know will end up all right. In Jesus' name, amen.
I'd like to head to that right now, to keep up with the news with the, and I'm gonna have this, but the Roman Catholic Church has just selected a new Pope. And I think we all need to pray that he's successful and, because he has a lot to do with what goes on in the world. So, let's continue to pray for him. Having said that, we'll get into our meeting now. The first item on our agenda is the amendments to the agenda. Can I see two?
Yes, sir. Actually, one addition and one removal. We need to add a resolution under presentations, and we're rescheduling the closed session, so we don't need to have to go into closed session.
Move to approve, sir. Amendments.
Have a motion to approve as in the second, and as amended, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed likewise. Thank you, Janice. Amendments to the previous meeting. Hopefully everyone had a chance to read them. Okay, we have a motion to approve as presented. Any, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed likewise. Sounds like it, Janice. Presentations. Now, some were here and I hadn't, okay, that one's canceled. We'll begin with the National Police Week Resolution. Do I have a feeling Mr. Widers is gonna read that?
Yes, sir. This resolution is the Smith County Board of Supervisors in honor of all enforcement officers in National Police Week. Whereas there are more than eight hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving communities across the United States, including dedicated members of the Smith County law enforcement agencies. And whereas, since the first recorded death in seventeen eighty-six, more than twenty-six thousand law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice in being killed in the line of duty. And whereas, the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved in the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC, where the names of the fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial, including one hundred and forty-eight officers killed in two thousand twenty-four. And whereas, the candlelight vigil is part of the National Police Week, which will be observed this year, May eleventh through seventeenth. And whereas, May fifteenth is designated as Peace Officer Memorial Day, in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and US flags should be flown and have staff. Whereas, Smith County prides itself in four agencies of Smith County to protect and serve its citizens, including the Smith County Sheriff's Office, the Town of Chillicothe Police Department, the Town of Marion Police Department, Town of Sawble Police Department, their dedication, passion, and enthusiasm. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of police officers by recognizing National Police Week. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Smith County Board of Supervisors declares the week of May eleventh through May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five, to be National Police Week in Smith County, in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our county and citizens safe. Adopted this tenth day of May, two thousand twenty-five, attest Sean M. Utte, clerk, and Smith County Board of Supervisors Charlie E. Atkins, chairperson.
Have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Let's change the date of that to today's date. Otherwise, I go for it.
Gave you the old one, I'm sorry.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed likewise. Motion carries. I believe we have a presentation to make.
Law enforcement, you wanna come up? Yeah, I think we have representatives from all four, or at least three or four. So, normally, we have these fancy frames, and this year, we bought ten, eight by ten instead of eight and a half by eleven. So, I didn't want to cut my fingers off. And I'll give a copy to the Town Sawble. You know, this is a special year, so I appreciate you guys doing everything you all do. Don't break the phone. Thank you all.
Thank you for your service.
Appreciate it.
Now, we're going to recognize National Emergency Medical Services Week Resolution. And I believe Mr. Harris will read that.
Sir. This resolution is the Smith County Board of Supervisors in honor of Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas, emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of the emergency medical services agencies are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas, in May of nineteen twenty-eight, Julian Stanley Wise witnessed two persons in a capsized canoe in Roanoke, and with multiple bystanders and with no training, saw the need for training and organization in EMS, started the first volunteer EMS agency in Roanoke in nineteen twenty-nine. And whereas, the emergency medical services system consists of five first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas, the members of the emergency medical services teams, whether career volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas, Smith County prides itself in the five agencies of Smith County that provides emergency medical services, the Town of Chillicothe, the Town of Marion, Sugar Grove Life Saving Crew, Nebo Fire Department, and Smith County for their dedication, passion, and enthusiasm. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value of the accomplishments of the emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Smith County Board of Supervisors declares the week of May eighteenth to May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five, to be Emergency Medical Services Week in Smith County, in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our county and citizens safe. Adopted this eighth day of May, two thousand twenty-five, Sean Clark, Charlie Atkins, Chair, Smith County Board of Supervisors.
All right, give me a motion.
Move to approve with a date change?
Second.
He had the right date.
I was a ten?
No, he said the eighth. Yeah, you did right. Yeah, he adjusted it. In case y'all wanted our notes, say something. Take the day's the tenth, sir.
Feels like it.
So, we gonna be messed up all night. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed likewise. Motion carries.
Oh, that's the EMS folks to come up. I think I only have one copy per agency on the EMS side. And I can bring frames to the, to your stations if you want.
No, y'all get, no, no, right here. Oh, no, oh, no. You're dressed for it. Come here in the middle. Oh, no.
But I'm gonna make you guys look short.
Don't worry.
Put your, turn around.
I make myself look short.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much. That's Chillicothe Education. Did you hear that reading?
Well, appreciate you. Now, we come to the good part. Look how the room cleared out, would you? We come to the exciting part, and they all leave. Deedah.
We didn't have the economic development resolution, when we added.
I thought I did that one. I'm long off here, I'm sorry. See, I'm all day, I'm just fairly confused.
Well, actually, I think Kendra was excited because you said it comes to good part.
All right, Kendra, we'll let you do the National Economic Development Week Resolution.
I don't mind reading it. Resolution in support of National Economic Development Week. Whereas, across Virginia, hundreds of economic developers work with business leaders, local governments, and community partners to bring investment, opportunity, and sustainability to the places we call home. And whereas, the economic development profession cultivates thriving neighborhoods, champions sustainability and resiliency, boosts economic prosperity, enhances the quality of life, and builds robust tax bases. And whereas, from July first, two thousand nineteen, to June thirty, two thousand twenty-four, Virginia celebrated over a thousand company announcements, nearly ninety thousand new jobs, and more than one hundred and forty-three billion dollars in capital investment. Where, for every dollar invested in economic development, the return to the state in tax revenue was an estimated eight dollars. And whereas, economic development professionals serve as stewards, bridging connections between community stakeholders such as residents, business leaders, elected officials, industry executives, and educational administrations to collaborate in promoting job creation, community investment, infrastructure advancements, and an optimistic future. And whereas, economic developers contribute to the betterment and progress of Virginia. Proven that economic development efforts create stronger communities. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Smith County Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes Economic Development Week of May eleventh through seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. It reminds individuals of the importance of this community celebration, which supports expanding opportunities, bettering lives, and moving our society forward. Adopted this eighth day of May, two thousand twenty-five.
All right, you heard your resolutions. What's the pleasure of the morning? We have, we have three approvals in three seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed likewise.
Mr. Service, would you like to present the resolution? I was hoping I could get the regional economic development folks here, but she had another. Right. I mean, hand everybody up here talking.
I'll take what I can get.
Seen how many phones I got about a second.
Thank you.
For breaking them.
Now, we come to the interesting part. Hey, I'm gonna let you have the floor.
Okay, I wanna get the podium. I'll lay on my.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are you gonna give a little presentation, then go through our wishlist, or?
Well, I got some updates for some of the questions from the last time.
We wanna do that first?
We can do that first if you want.
Oh, yeah, whatever, whichever way you have it planned.
We can do that, and then we can do the, I guess then the next thing would be the public hearing part of it?
Yeah.
Okay. I got update on current VDOT projects in Smith County for any plan through the summer for paving and bridge repairs. And we have patching paving going on, proposed for Steel House Road, Town Springs Road, Nebo Mountain Road, and then Route three forty-eight, which is the Hungry Mother State Park Road that goes through the park. That's what we have planned now. As far as bridges, the McMullen Bridge.
Town Springs Road, is that patching, or is that like the paved road?
We're patching it.
Patching?
It's not gonna be completely paved. It'll be patched.
Is that the current job that they're doing right now?
You know, it's on a schedule, so it possibly could be. They could be. Now, I mean. Maybe you'll make, take a look at it.
Is it the same company did it last year?
I'm not sure who's got the contract this year.
Oh, God, if they did it, it won't be passed.
I don't know what's there now. It's just, there's, it looks like it.
And for the bridge projects, we got McMullen Bridge coming up. Then there's a bridge at Exit fifty, which is over Nix Creek. That'll be done in the spring of twenty-six. And then Route six fifty-one will be done in the spring of twenty-six on its carriage road, and that'll be a concrete deck replacement. So, that's what we have right now coming up. And Mr. Billings had asked about any paving on railroad drive and hollowed-ition roads, and they are not on this year's paving list.
What are you doing to the bridge over at Exit fifty?
Concrete, I mean, the deck replacement.
So, will they go down to one lane?
I would say so, yes, just in order to do it safely. They'll close the length.
What's the width of that project?
The length of it?
Yes.
It'll be whatever approaches on either end of the bridge that they'll have.
Time frame.
Oh, the, well, that is, I'm not sure what that is. Whenever they do those projects, they do get lengthy for a bridge repair. But I can find out for you and let you know.
I just know that, I mean, that's a major congestion point. We know that every time we start doing that, I mean, I got called one going to Bristol the other day for several, several minutes.
It'd be nice we could say, hey, it's scheduled the end of June fifty, you know, whatever day we come up with.
It just so happens I had to do the bridge where most of our tractor or trailer trucks getting off for.
It's gonna begin, I know it's gonna begin in the spring of twenty-six, but I can find out what their estimated date for the closing.
Do you know if it's northbound or southbound, or both?
Uh, it just says now it's over Nix Creek. I think it's probably gonna be northbound, but I can.
That seems to be the older one.
No, they were both built sometime. Frazel came in there and put them up in no time.
Yeah, it'll depend on which ones deteriorated the most, and I think that was the northbound correction. Okay, and I think that was it for, unless you have any questions?
Did we get the crash data on the, we got the link on the crash data that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Was this just questions about the questions that were submitted? Or did you have anything else that, it's not everybody sent updates, so.
Did you send her the link from last time?
Yeah.
All of everything that was brought up on the two thirteen meeting, you had updates on those?
Yes. Nothing has really changed from my responses from them. There's still, any work is still planned, is scheduled out. Like, I think one of them was the Nix Creek, the rocks that washed down to the Nix Creek Bridge. And Bridge Division has a contractor that's going around, since the hurricane, they're going around to clean out all the bridges. And it's on a schedule to be, the debris to be cleaned out from underneath the bridge from the hurricane.
So, it's on the list at least?
It's on a list, and they are, they're moving through their list through, they've got, actually, they got twelve counties and the district that were hit, which are counties were hit by the hurricane, so they're systematically going through that list.
Like, I know one, and there's a picture of it in there, that there's a barrel sitting in a hole in the road. And I was through there last night, and there's a barrel sitting in a hole in the road.
Which one is that? Because I didn't.
That's part of the PowerPoint.
Yeah, it's, it's Bell Holla.
Bell Holla.
Yeah.
Because there was some bridge work done.
This is not, this is where drain tile goes across, and the road's actually, it's, actually, the road is continuing to sink as it moves across the road.
I think drain tile may have been damaged by the hurricane.
Yeah, but there was a barrel sitting in it when I took the picture, and the same barrel sitting in the same place.
Okay, I'll check that out.
Just real quick questions, if it's okay. I didn't submit this just because I, I had a question that had come up. No, it's not that. No, that's next. But I had a question from a citizen about littering signs. Is that something that you all?
No littering, or?
The littering, the no littering, the fine, and?
That is something that traffic engineering installs?
There was just some question that thought that that might help alleviate some of the problems throughout the county and.
And where, where would you wanna, I mean?
Well, their question is about all over the county.
Oh, okay.
And I, I mean, you know, I, I don't know, obviously, that would fix anything, but I don't know that I've really seen any.
Yeah, right there, right there at Thomas Bridge Road, where you're coming out, and you, you basically transition from the top of the hill where their whole shop was. That right there is just trash all the time, and they'll pick it up today, and it'll be the same way tomorrow. Now, I don't know if that's the way the wind blows, I don't know what that is.
So, do you need, moving forward with that, do you need really specific areas?
Yes, because if we, if we get a location, then I can turn it into the sign division, and they will review it.
Yeah, that's a good point. We probably, we have a litter pickup program in it. And we may just get with them and see where their heaviest areas are, just see if that might be a possibility. And one other question. What is the status on plant lane?
No, it is still, we see it as a private drive, so that unless they want to make, you know, lose their front yards and make a lot of improvements there, it'll continue to be a private drive.
VDOT's private drive.
It's a private drive we're allowing on the right of way.
The VDOT owns it, right?
Yes, it is within the right of way.
Moving to Exit forty-seven, are you still, are they still looking at, are they planning on looking at the, what's going on there, and what's the status?
That green tea, that?
Well, just that whole intersection.
They, yes, it is under review. Nothing, right now, they don't see any changes, the accident data, since they changed the color on those delineators. The accident data has seemed, it's not, it's dropped, so, but they are watching it.
If I remember correctly, they were gonna do a twelve-month watch and see, probably somewhere in the summertime.
I mean, a little bit longer. I'll be able to tell you that I go through there.
Every day?
Somebody come off the interstate turn.
Are they still looking at the line where you, when you get off, what is that, in Brooklyn? The one right there where you stop, and you have to either go right or left. That line is still, if the bridge clearance is not enough to see when someone's coming.
So, you're talking about the stop bar going into Route eleven?
Yeah, you've got the stop bar there. If you pull up there and stop, you have to pull past that to see past the bridge.
And I have forwarded that on to that division, and they are looking at it.
You know, I use it all the time. Somebody, when you watch that, that seems to be the biggest area of my concern is people are having to pull past the stop bar, and then that's when you get people coming up or people trying to turn in, and there's a whole lot of, that's where the confusion is at, is those people pulling up to see you, because if you don't, I guess if you're in a, in a full-size truck, you can see over it. But somebody that's in a passenger car, or whatever, we get these crossovers now, they're not tall enough to see past the bridge, until it's right at the end of the bridge.
And I've passed, I think that we, that had come up before, and I've passed that on, and they are looking into it.
What about, can I ask you, in front of Blue Ridge Knives, have y'all looked at that double line?
Yes, that's been denied. They're gonna leave that passing zone, yeah.
Questioned the person who made that decision.
They look at crash data?
I was there yesterday, and somebody pulled out like that, and I thought I was gonna see a crash.
Yeah, but I think that's one of those that you shouldn't be looking at previous data. You should be looking at the business going in across the road and make a decision based off of future data.
And that is under construction. It probably will. Anytime that kind of changes, the density of the businesses or housing changes, then we look at it.
And so, you've got, you took that other, that new place going in, and also.
Do you, do you know by any chance, are they gonna be required to do a turn lane as part of their development?
No, because they're, they're more of a low volume. It's mainly people just picking up the trailers and things, so it's not a high, or it's not a standard volume. So, it's low volume, and the amount of traffic they're generating, a taper is required, but not a turn lane.
And I know it said it's the roundabout. Everybody loves that. I don't mind it. I think it'll be fine. But is that, I know it says it's coming, but is that, is it coming in the next, is it supposed to be open today, tomorrow, next week, a year from now?
No, I'm not sure when it will actually be opened up, and the traffic signal's gone, but it is coming soon, because they paved it, they've done everything. It's just some minor things, and that's a construction division, and that's not something that we normally, we don't take care of that in residency, but I can find out for you when it's gonna be.
An actual date.
An actual date. Make a note here.
And I would still ask on those projects we've got from Holene that was brought up, I think it was at the last meeting, we could just get an update on when those things are scheduled, or when they're, because we brought them up, and then you came back this month. Well, you won't be back for three months, so if nothing happens.
If you need me, I can come back, I mean, before the three months.
Yeah, I mean, if you're gonna go back and say they're scheduled, or they're not scheduled, or we're looking at it.
Which sites are you talking about?
All of those in that great big presentation that I get with pictures and descriptions.
I can find it for you.
Yeah.
I've got that, but we, you know, as far as air hurricane sites, we have addressed all of those.
I doubt it.
We, all the ones.
I could take you to Stony Battery, where there's a hole that's four feet deep right beside off. You go up to the, if you was to run off the side of the road, if a car runs into that, it will be bad, because it is, and it's from the hurricane. So, I mean, there's, there's still a lot of that. The one that's on, a lot of those that were addressed were hurricane-related damage, and they're still yet to be addressed.
And I have given those to the area headquarters, and they're working through them as they, as they can schedule.
If somebody would like to meet me?
Uh huh.
We'll go around, or? But I just noticed there's still a lot of those that.
If you'd like to, I don't mind going out with Mr. Harris, and we can get an address.
That'd be great, or coordinates?
Those are provided in the PowerPoint presentation.
Because mainly, I mean, the coordinates would be great, too. Are they in?
Those are, they're on, where the coordinates were picked up.
Okay. Any other questions?
I still asked you, did they give you a rationale for why they denied it?
Yes, they, they look at crash data, and there's nothing in there that points to them changing it. And it's, it's just that the regulations say they can't change these things until they do a study. They look at the study, looks at crash data, the speed, the amount of traffic on the road, and so it does not work to change.
That's what I was wondering.
But with this new business going in across the road, that does change things. So, once they open up, then we can revisit that.
People, I'm worried about people pulling out with the trailer slow, if that, like.
That's what I, I've heard about. I had seen, but I was just kind of there in the weeds, and saw that exact thing that they were talking about. Vehicle pull out, and come to, and it was just about a crash.
I'm just worried about school buses, too, because in the afternoon, you know, you got people slowing down going towards Chillicothe. But the people come through that zone, and the first thing they do is they slam it. And you get somebody pulling out the pass.
And that would not be a small red.
No, I just go back and say, I'd hate to be the person that has to answer to a whole busload of kids getting hit, well, the study said we didn't qualify. And that's VDOT on record, and that's my board of supervisors, so I'm just saying. I mean, I think be proactive once, as opposed to reactive. And that's VDOT on record and that's not board supervisor, so I'm just saying, I mean, I think be proactive once as opposed to reactive. And look at something and say, it makes sense now not to wait a year and a half till, you know, there's fifteen accidents and go, well, we should've done something.
I just wanna think, uh, exit thirty-five, is there any plans there?
Uh, we did have some, you, you're talking about the bridge underneath, on, on the, the road underneath, um, we did have some plans there, we met with the town, discussed that with them. And they've decided not to move forward with that, uh, what, what we had proposed there, so at this time, we didn't know.
Walkway, gravel walkway.
Uh, a gravel, uh, path underneath the, uh, the bridge, uh, on the approaches of the bridge, but they, they decided it would not be a, uh, it would not be a fix. So, we, uh.
So right now, does it change?
Right, we, we don't have any other plans at this time. Uh, you know, to really change that and put a sidewalk in there, that would be a new bridge construction and I, I mean, that would be a, a, a large project. Not something that we could handle out of the residency.
I'd just like to see up there a baller or something, just so you can see, cause I know like, it, it's come, getting out there and turning way up towards Hardee's. And I've, I've come close and, and you have to pull out kind of the road to be able, it's, and it's cause you off, it got those barriers and I understand why the barriers are there one hundred percent, they need to be there. You just, sort of like once you go to exit forty-seven, you just can't see until the vehicles right on top of you. Well, just, just try to be convenient.
I gotta cut it.
Okay.
When you get big breath. Just, just like what you're saying, we've got a bridge, Upper Four Valley Road went out during the hurricane.
Mm-hmm.
Bridge is gone, it's one lane. And they just one of those arms like barrel things sitting down in the creek and then they've done, done worse down the creek. And then it's been that way, it's not been tested out the pipe, two big covered pipes, core gated, it's just out there and then you got half a road. And they're going around doing pipe, but it's Upper Four Valley Road and it's one right above it too. The bridge has gone the pipe the same way and the bus has to stop and let cars go by before they can cross it.
And, uh, and this is the other one above Upper Four Valley?
Yeah, it's going towards Steel House.
Okay, I'll take, I'll find it on the, on the map.
Yes, you turn in there, McCready Methodist Church.
Uh-huh.
You, you can't miss them, cause you gotta go around them to get there and it's not been touched since the hurricane. None of that road is.
Okay, we'll take a look at that.
I mean, I just think it's a perception thing too. I know that everything happened and there was federal money flowing and people was everywhere doing stuff. But now that it's back to the normal people, we need to ensure that this stuff happens. We can't just say, well, it's on the list.
Yeah, we, we haven't, uh, actually, we, we're paying for all this upfront, we don't, we, we hope to get reimbursed for the federal money, so we're still, we're still got a lot of projects out there. From both the flood that happened in the middle of February and the hurricane, we're, uh, finishing up on some of those things, but.
As I have been reminded in numerous times, all of these issues are in front of people's houses that pay taxes that should be fixing this stuff. And.
Well, if you know the highway department has many former employees.
That's the one.
Take the number.
Yeah, and that's the barrel on Bell Holla.
Okay.
That day, and now this is in the road and this is sitting in a hole, so that hole just continues to come across the road and this was before our last meeting.
We will definitely take a look at, uh, Bell Holla.
That's right, before you get to the church there.
Did you have any, uh, just those two, Upper Four Valley and the road above it? Okay, we'll, we'll take a look at it.
Core gated pipe type grid cover.
Okay.
Now that we started this, we'll listen to you.
Uh, that's all I had as far as, uh, the comments and then I guess we're, we're gonna go to the, to the, uh, public hearing. Um, we, uh, I've, I've got the forms, Sean, if, uh.
Like you wanna get us started on that or? I guess, um, open the public hearing and who's gonna read the?
You're gonna read the rules or?
Well, I, I, I entertain a motion to waive the rules, cause this don't look like too rowdy of a court.
Second.
A motion to second, any discussion, all those in favor of wa- waiving the rules this meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? unanimous now. I'll open the public hearing.
Well, uh, the six-year plan, uh, is pretty much, you know, similar to last year. We weren't able to add any roads this year. Uh, due to the, the funding and the, um, the cost for the roads have gone up as we've, you know, discussed before. So we are not able to add a new road, but we are working to, um, complete the projects that are on the six-year plan and be able to add them in the next year or two.
What can we do to get more money put into the six-year plan? I mean, what they're putting in there each year is not, not enough to, to do, I mean, i- it's chicken feed. They're probably spending more on administration than they are doing the roadwork.
And that is based on county lane miles. A percentage of that is what, is what funds the six-year plan for the rural rustic projects or any, uh, road improvement projects. So, uh, at this time, I guess it's set at a certain amount per lane mile and, um, I'm not sure if that'll change in the future. I, I don't know.
It's chicken feed, what we're getting done, I mean, it's ridiculous.
I, I'd be curious, I wonder what, you know, fifteen years, twenty years ago, we were doing two or three projects a year. Uh, I wonder the total amount that's put into that fund each year, has that gone down that much?
I don't know it's gone down, but the cost to build the road has gone up.
Cost has gone up so much.
Yes.
Do you know if there's anything that's been maybe pushed to the general assembly or anything that has to do with any kind of adjustments with that?
Not that I know of, not that I'm aware of.
Maybe that's something we can, we can, transportation.
We don't, yeah, absolutely.
To try and discuss, because I mean, that's, you know, that is disappointing going from being able to do certain projects, so hopefully, and then all of a sudden, we can't.
And, and.
We can't really do anything, cause I mean, literally, you've got enough that, that's provided there to fix a couple potholes.
And, and this is something that counties statewide are, I mean, it hasn't been, um, increased, and especially since the pandemic, everything has really gone up, but, but that, um, what we're getting per lane mile is not gonna.
Alright, thank you. Um, we didn't have anybody sign up to speak. Anyone wishing to speak on the, on board states, you name an address for the record.
My name is Diane Beck. I live at two nine two Oak Grove Road in Saltville. I have lived here for twenty years. Oak Grove Road has never been paved, slurried, nothing. Other than dumping asphalt and taking a road grater to it, which was done maybe ten years ago. Three years ago, I emailed VDOT. I got a phone call from the supervisor in Chill Hallie. He came out and looked at the road. He agreed that something needed to be done, but all the money had been spent for that year. And he said he would put it on the next year's. I used to work for the state, I know how the state budget runs, so, you know, I was patient. Nothing got done. This spring, well, we'll say last fall when Helene hit. The water ran down, Oak Grove is a half mile long. It connects to Crosslink, which is another half mile off of six ten. When Helene hit, the water ran down the road and it, uh, my nearest neighbor, there is a break in the pavement. I know I could put my foot in up to the ankle. My neighbor is elderly, he doesn't see well, and he has a bad heart. He lives alone. He has to cross the road to go to his mailbox. We don't go out every day. We live at the end of the road. If he was to fall trying to get over to his mailbox, it could be all day before his children or anyone come to check on him. I emailed him again this spring. The supervisor called me again and I got the same runaround. All the money has been spent. We need something done. All it is is potholes and slurry patches. Every road around us, Beaver Creek, Possum Hollow, Don Hollow, Hunter's Lane, every one of them has been paved and slurried. And not one thing has been done to Oak Grove and Crosslink. Last year at Farmers Club, Rich Valley Farmers Club, we had a representative from VDOT and he brought the list of what was supposed to be done. And he said we needed to come, so I'm here.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Is that road currently a gravel road?
No, it is a hardtop road, both of them are. I called VDOT one day, I was told that it wasn't a state-maintained road. I said, I think you better check your facts again.
It's, it's got, it's got a route seven eight.
Yeah, seven eighty.
Pam, does anything you'd like to say?
We will, we'll, we'll check it out. We'll, we'll take a look at it and, uh, and it's true, we've already got everything, um, buttoned up this year for the patching and paving schedule, but we can look at it for next year.
That's, that's all I'm asking.
I apologize for what you've been told in the past, but.
Well, I know, and the supervisor, the supervisor I spoke to this year was not the same one that was there three years ago.
That's correct, that's correct. But I'm, I'm gonna, this is your house down the road right here.
It's at the very end of the road. I realize it, there's not a lot of people that live on the road, but, you know, between us and Crosslink, there's eleven different houses. You know, but we will check it out and something needs to be done. I understand.
Just out of curiosity, you know how long it's been since that road's been touched?
I'm sorry?
How long was, you know how long it's been since that road's been touched or?
It's been at least ten years and then it was just dumping asphalt and talk, taking the road grater and he told me he would do the same thing this year.
You know, you talked to?
Whoever one of the supervisors was.
Well, I mean, we've, we've made some movements through promotions, but whoever you talked to three years ago is probably still here, just in a different.
Well, no, I don't.
Okay.
No, but this was probably a month, six weeks ago that I spoke with the supervisor in Chill Hallie and so.
Now, look, I'm, I'm, would you speak to me?
I'm sorry?
Would you speak to me?
VDOT, VDOT supervisor.
VDOT supervisor.
Yes, VDOT supervisor. Yes.
One of the two.
You're not room that far, I'm trying to think.
Is that area covered?
My gray mass is losing density of the.
If it's over in your salt, we guess.
Yeah, and it, it's probably a surface treated road, just.
Yeah, probably hasn't been surface treated, probably not been asphalted. It's probably not asphalt, it's probably surface treated.
Now, you're asking.
We'll, we'll look at it.
That's what.
Okay, well, I would appreciate it if you would, cause you can get a better, you can understand it better if you look at it. I kept asking my husband, do I, wouldn't it help if I went and took a picture?
I'm married to you as well before you did.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Hearing done, I'll close, citizen time, I'm, I'm, not citizen's time, I'll close this, uh, public hearing. Thank you all for being here.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just with time of the essence, uh, would it be appropriate to go ahead and waive the rules and, uh, go ahead and take actions, especially since there's, we can't put any new projects on anyway? So it's just a more, more of a formality, that way I can go ahead and give the forms back to them.
Well, let's make them wait on here. We'll have to put that under study.
Well, I, I messed up and already, I've already dated them.
Well, we're gonna do a study.
Do a bracket count, right? That's right.
Somebody wanna waive the rules?
I'll make the motion to waive the rules.
Have a motion to second, all those in favor of waiving the rules signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries five oh. Now, we need a motion to.
To adopt the plan as presented?
I don't want to. I won't, I won't put something on it.
Move to, uh, adopt as presented.
I, I just have one, I'd like to ask, well, I guess you need a second.
I need a second verse.
Oh, I'll second it.
Alright, any discussion?
I just wanted to ask the, uh, Town Springs Road, I know I'm gonna get several questions. Do you know when it's on the list? Supervisor that represented Chill Hallie before me, he told me it was on the, the list to be repaved when he went off, which was about twenty twenty.
Well, uh, I can, I can get that answer for you because the, once a contractor gets that list, it's, then they start knocking on, they, they start performing the work. So it depends on where they are today and, you know, when they'll get completed.
Could you get that information? I appreciate it.
Alright, any other discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor of the, uh, of, uh, not adding anything to the six-year plan signify by saying aye. Any opposed likewise? Aye. I oppose it. Four to one.
Those were disappointing.
Thank you.
Yes, they were not joyous in agreement.
Exactly.
I, I realize that. And I realize we had enough votes to pass it.
Do you know the route number for Town Springs?
Yes.
Do you know the route number for Town Springs?
Isaiah, real quick.
Because we, uh, Josh got the list by route and he can tell you.
I'll tell you.
Want the route number?
Yeah. I don't know it, I'll tell you by hand.
Let me see. Uh, Town Springs Road was fine. Six oh six? I've got a two-week look ahead here, let me see, six oh six?
Six oh six, yes, sir.
And, and he can look at it and see where they are with Town Springs.
And I follow this thing, it's like thirty-nine pages long, so it's not very phone-friendly. And you have Pam email it to me, that's, that, that, I mean, that's what I. And I'm not gonna say it's not on here, but this is just a two-week look ahead that they sent us out, but we can, we can, we can either use some.
I'll, I'll find out tomorrow.
Alright, moving on then, financial, uh.
Thank you guys.
Status. Thank you all. Do anything you can for us now, and if you really improve, we're for it.
I live in Smith County, so I don't.
I know, I know where you live, you know, you, bear be careful there.
Just barely, here to say, I almost said town barely.
Alright, financial, Ms. Richardson, you gonna give us a financial report?
I certainly will share with you the information I have. Uh, state county financial report through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five should be there, um, in front of you there with your, on your desk, it's not in the printed, in the online packet. So as of April thirtieth, we had a CD and, uh, bank balance of twenty-one million, three hundred ninety-one thousand, one hundred seventy-nine dollars and sixty-three cents. That's right in line with what we had the same time last year. Our balance bond funds, twenty-six million, five seventy-five, seven forty-two, fifty-two. As well as the treasurer's accountability that shows your fund balances and, and, um, the treasurer's records. And you should have a revenue summary that has the appropriated amount, if you look on the very back page. It shows the budgeted appropriated amount and the current amount and the year-to-date amount that has been collected. On the back page, which right now is, uh, hundred and seven million, one hundred twenty-three thousand, one hundred thirty-five dollars. So that's the revenue that's been collected today. I know there's been some questions about the, the budget versus what has been collected. So this report, the cabinet recognizes that orient.
What's our largest shortfall?
That would come.
Just from the, from the calculation error, I would say it would be.
Our budget, our budget is what?
We expected twelve, twelve million six and I think we're eleven six, eleven seven.
Any other area that, that you know of that's written?
BMS.
BMS.
Yeah, we're, we're not, we're, we're probably running about forty percent of what was budgeted, what was projected, just because we didn't know. More or less, it was, we only had about six months where we put together this budget, so our next budget year is gonna be much more conservative.
Let me ask you this, are we collecting what, as far as the percentage that we expected or is it falling way short? I mean, I'm just, as far, as, as, in other words, as things get turned in on time. I mean, I'm just as far, is, is, in other words, is things getting turned in on time?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're up to par with, with um, the percentages that we, I guess, let me take a step back, so. My understanding was it was a percentage of what we spent is what we would collect. It's actually a percentage of what we bill, and that was, I, I take blame for that cause I just semantics and not understanding the full EMS operation. So we're at, we're at a reasonable level of, of collections for what we bill, seventy percent or so. Probably about twenty-five percent of what we spend to, to, to run the EMS versus collections. You're never gonna make money with EMS.
No, I, I'm like.
You hope to get closer to fifty percent of what you spend.
So we're not allowed to bill what it actually cost us?
No. No, and honestly, in, in Smith County, the line of share is, is, you know, Medicare, Medicaid, and they're only gonna pay what they're gonna pay. We have some insurance providers that'll pay what we bill, and then we have quite a few that you'll never see payments from. Just because they don't have insurance or Medicaid or anything like that. So it's, it's been a learning experience for sure. Yep, yes sir.
Can you have the expenditure summary as well, which is basically the same, it, it shows the amount that's appropriated in the budget and the uh, year-to-date expense amount and what's remaining. And that's all I have.
As we move through the last two months of this fiscal year, are we challenging our departments to, have we given them a target? And said we, we would really, cause I, I work for a company, and they just came to us and said, listen, times are tough, you need to save this much, no questions?
Actually had a good conversation with um, uh, Department Head, Constitutional Officer earlier today about, you know, trying to save all we can, we're not spending down to zero, so.
But I mean, and I think, yeah, my opinion is, it's important to have that conversation.
No, absolutely.
And it needs to, and just for me, you know, as, as everything gets tighter, we're not a revenue generating entity. So all the money we generate comes from citizens, and we need to be as good, as steward of that money as we can.
Absolutely.
And I understand, I know how budgets work, a lot of times you get to the end of the year and somebody goes, ooh, I need a thousand eight pence, and they go buy them. If I don't spend it, I don't get it anymore. And I'm still one that says, I, I understand you asked for it, but if you don't need it, there's no need to just spend it to spend it.
Yep, I agree.
I think we've got that pretty well. That, that trained us all pretty well, there's a couple places I might say that's still happening, but overall, I think they, they know now we're gonna be fair with them.
Yep.
We used to have that, in, in the place, but you don't see that much anymore.
It was abandoned a few years ago, we, it, we sort of cracked down on it, so all of a sudden, one year in May, everybody spent it early cause they knew we was gonna tell them they couldn't spend it in June. So.
I just bring it up.
You did have that conversation in March.
Yeah.
I know that we also have new department heads, we have new people, and it's something that you have to stay on, cause if you lose focus.
I agree.
They, they get right back into it, cause that's, that's the norm everywhere.
I'm surprised to see that our revenue from, uh, let me find it here again, now, the, the personal property tax is above what we projected.
Yes, I know, we talked about that earlier.
Yeah, I am, I, I think that's a, that's a good example where I've tried and budgeted conservatively and uh, I, I was thinking that we had budgeted conservatively in other areas where we had the, the real estate era, but yeah, I was pleased to see that. Cause I know that there were still some, there's still some questions on making sure that we're billing everything.
Now, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say this, and I'm hoping no one from the treasurer's office is paying attention to this meeting, but they used to be no help whatsoever in, in doing the revenue side of this budget. I would ask them, you know, how much it's gonna be, and they had no idea.
I, I've gotta give Mr. Virtue the credit, the last, my years that I've been here, he's really helped me a lot putting, pulling together the revenue side, so I appreciate it. Yep.
I know one year he had, he told me he had to go talk to the bank, and I'm thinking, huh? It's, but uh, good, I'm happy to hear that that's.
Is there a percentage in mind or a dollar in mind that between now and the end of fiscal year, that that projected current shortfall will come down?
No, um, shortfall for real estate?
I mean, I'm just saying, across the board, when we look at the bottom numbers here, you know, the one oh seven is where we're at, where do we expect that number to come in at?
Let me open my little spreadsheet here. If I was a betting man, we're at one oh seven now, um, I would say probably in the one, mid one twenties is where we'll, where we'll end up, cause we have, you know, we're budgeted at a hundred and fifty-seven, but a lot of that is one-time construction money and projects like that. I'd say somewhere in the one twenties, and if, um, this was, my numbers on my spreadsheet are older than what you have, that we were, we're about, let's say, eight or nine million to the good right now. That'll come down significantly because the school board will spend six or seven million uh, in June, uh, just because, for payrolls for July and August.
Okay.
Now, we have, we have some bonuses, that school, the July bonus, that will probably be budgeted.
The schools have to be in June in this fiscal year.
About to be passed our ordinance to allow.
Well, this, the school board, the schools don't need the ordinance, we need the ordinance for county employees, which is odd. Uh, the school boards are allowed to, to have it, but yeah, ours will be first of July.
Okay. Well, that'll be out of next year's budget as long as we got the cash to do it.
Yep.
Okay. Any more questions on the financial statements? I appreciate you, it looks like we take a little more time to begin to understand this more, I, I appreciate that. Moving on to Rosco's favorite, the payment of invoices and accounts payable. Have a motion to pay, have a second? Have a second, any discussion? If you, if you get a chance, go through that list that you receive, because it's an eye-opener when you look at the departments. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a suggestion, I know we can't do it under our current AS four hundreds thing, but when we switch over and we get this same type of, it would be nice if we knew that what department we're looking at, not having to go back and figure it out. You know, in, in words in the heading, if you're looking at sheriff's expenses, this is sheriff, this is water and sewer, this is.
Yeah.
You know, to do it right now, you gotta know what those numbers mean.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we're gonna take some effort into putting that together.
All right, because we do it to start with, we got it from in the lounge.
When does our new system kick in?
It'll be the end of the calendar year, first of, you know, HR will start, I think, September.
Well, hopefully September, they may move it back.
But the more, the more, more we can make it friendly to us, the better off we, we would actually have something to, to know what's going on. That's my sermon for the night, I think. All those in favor of paying bills, invoices, accounts payable, signify or say no? Any opposed likewise? Motion carries five oh. Citizen's time, I'll now open citizen's time, anybody wanting to speak?
Nobody signed up.
Well. We may have to send the sheriff out to check on Mr. Rowan, he hasn't been here a while.
Mr. Watson.
Mr. Watson, yeah.
He wasn't at the town meeting.
What if he's sick or something, I hadn't heard, but. I'll close public hearing, uh, citizen's time.
Thank you for telling me that.
Now, going on to old business, committee reports, the ordinance committee, Mr. Sturgill is chair.
It might be easier on the, the cheat sheet I've got all summer.
Well, that'd be great. Let's see, the ordinance committee met on May first, twenty twenty-five, and reviewed a state requirement for an ordinance allowing employee bonuses. Mr. Wright noted that due to the state budget, including provisions for employee bonuses effective July first, we would need an updated ordinance. He suggests the next step would be to schedule a public hearing for public input on the draft ordinance. All right, let's see. Akin Supervisor Charlie Atkins made motion to recommend scheduling a public hearing on May twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, five P M. Or thereafter to gain public comments to consider adopting an ordinance to allow for county employee bonuses pursuant to section fifteen point two dash fifteen oh eight. Parks District Supervisor Chris Wright was seconded the motion, and it was unanimously approved.
All righty, that was committee recommendation, any discussion? All those in favor signify to say no? Ah, any opposed likewise? All righty, I heard four. Five oh, okay. Water and Sewer Committee, that was it for. Water and Sewer Committee, Mr. Collins, chair.
Committee met on May first, reviewed the, is that SCADA, how you say that? SCADA project bids, Mr. Williams presented to committee, uh, his staff recommenda, uh, wait a minute, I'm late, Charlie. I'm, I had a senior moment. The staff recommendation of Infomark as a preferred contractor, due to their qualifications, proximity and cost. He also noted that we have accumulated grant funds to help pay through the initial phases of the project and plans to continue to apply for funding until everything is built. Private Superior Jason Parrish made a motion to approve Infomark as a contractor for the project. The motion was seconded by North Fork District, Rick Levins, Killings, sorry, it was unanimously approved.
All righty, that's a committee recommendation, uh, any further discussion?
And that is for, just remind, I guess, outside of the committee, that is for monitoring software for different areas of the county that should alleviate some of the need for people to have to run back and forth to do way more labor.
Water tanks, meters, up stations.
Up stations.
I mean, I have a feeling most people don't know what SCADA is.
Did Aaron Sarsburg get in touch with you?
Uh, he did, actually, yeah, through Brown. Uh, we talked briefly the other day and he had some very good news and I could go share that.
Let's put the caller on here a little bit.
I have keys still working at that place.
Thank you, that's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
All right, committee recommendation, no, any, no further discussion, all those in favor signify to say no? Any opposed likewise? I believe that was five oh. Public Safety Committee, Mr. Wyner, you have three minutes. I'll be.
I didn't find it funny.
You'll get it one day.
I was just waiting for citizen's time.
Yep.
Heard that supervisor comment time. Uh, the Public Safety Committee met on May first, discussed the funding support for the Sugar Grove Fire Department, purchase of used fire engine. Uh, Mr. Weinberger, uh, who's president, they had the purchase price of sixty-five thousand, the department has paid a ten thousand dollar deposit. After further discussion, the uh, following recommendation was made, Ryan Valley District Supervisor Jason Parrish made a recommendation to send the Sugar Grove uh, request for loan assistance in the amount of fifty-five thousand dollars for the purchase of a two thousand and ten tanker fire truck with a ten-year interest-free loan to the Budget Committee for approval. Before moving on to the full board, uh, I had seconded the motion, it was unanimously approved. We don't need to make anything on that now, that's.
The budget, right?
Yeah, cause it went to budget. Uh, next item discussed was regional PSAP enhancement project presented by Mr. Crawford and Mr. Johnson. This provides a, a grant-funded project to upgrade Southern Software, which is the nine-one-one dispatch center software. And it allows the dispatch centers um, to communicate more easily with each other, um, essentially other, other localities. Uh, the following recommenda, recommendation was made. Uh, Mr. Parrish, uh, recommend, recommended authorize the county administrator to sign and execute memorandum of understanding for regional enhancement for region uh, for um, PSAP. On behalf of Smith County, uh, I had seconded the motion, which was unanimously approved.
Okay, that's committee recommendation, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor signify to say no? Ah, any opposed likewise? I believe that was five oh.
Next item discussed was review of EMS fee schedule. Mr. Crawford noted that the Medicare has increased their reimbursement rates by eight point seven percent and recommended that we consider a similar increase. Mr. Parrish had made the recommendation to schedule a public hearing June fifth, two thousand twenty-five, five P M. Or shortly thereafter to consider an eight point seven percent increase in EMS billing rates related to the Medicare rate increase in the same amount. I had also seconded uh, that motion, and it was unanimously approved.
All right, committee recommendation, any discussion? I question whether we want, what's, what's our schedule for the budget on June fifth?
June fifth will include the uh, a special call meeting, uh, will have public hearings for the, the county budget, the school board budget, the water sewer rates, the um, proposed uh, real estate and then fee schedules, there's, there's some recommendations for about, maybe four, four different fee schedules to, to be adjusted. So that would be public hearings only, there won't be any action or anything else.
I, I have a problem just trying to do another, just doing this where we're talking about the budget, everything else.
It's actually, it's part of the budget process, for, it wouldn't be effective until July first.
All right, I'm just, any other discussion? All those in favor signify to say no? Any opposed likewise? Was it? Yep. Motion carries. Moving on to the Budget Committee, Mr. Wright will read the uh, report.
Okay, um, committee met on May first and had several items on the agenda, the first one uh, was a discussion with officials with the Town of Marion regarding the need to update our water purchase agreement with the town. The consensus of the group after discussion included a goal of an additional seven-year agreement with an option of three additional years beginning at five dollars per, per thousand gallons, which is the current rate that we're paying. Uh, it was also agreed that should rates from other water providers, that county purchased water from exceed five dollars, the Town of Marion rates would, could increase equally up to a maximum of six dollars per thousand, they did put a, a, a ceiling on it. After discussion, uh, Mr. Wyner made a motion to approve the proposed revisions and updates to the water purchase agreement with the Town of Marion as presented and authorize the county administrator to finalize and execute said contract subject to the county attorney's final review in concurrence. The motion was seconded by Mr. Sturgill and unanimously approved as a recommendation from committee.
Okay, that's committee recommendation, any further discussion?
Is this the county purchasing order or the?
It's, no, county purchasing order.
Actually, there's both ways.
Yeah.
But mainly, we're the ones buying the majority of it.
There's the ability for the camp, for the town to buy.
The town buy it from us too.
There's the ability, but I don't know that they've ever.
Yeah, they buy a couple of, a couple of places where, where they have lines and they, our lines before to get to theirs, so we, we buy it from then and sell it back to them for an amount to.
That's great, Washington.
I think up on sixteen south we do that. Somewhere else we used to do it. Yeah, whatever we do, we, we buy it at their rate and we sell it back to them same rate, and that's part of this agreement.
I wanna say. If it's about six dollars, can we raise ours up that way too?
Well, what would, what would happen is if, if Saltwell or Chil, or Chill Howie rates were to exceed five dollars, then they're basically reserving the right to consider raising equally, they're not guaranteeing it. Uh, in my opinion, I think it would be better for them if they kept it low, cause it would give us an incentive to buy more water off of them, but that's for later day, but yeah, they, if Chill Howie rates in seven years were higher than six dollars, then Town of Marion rates would be ceiling, would have a ceiling, could not exceed six dollars.
Will they pay us for it?
The same amount.
Six dollars?
They would pay us the same amount.
Well, it's not six dollars yet.
No.
If another town raises theirs, do we ever have to? Marion does, do we have the right to?
Yes, whatever we, whatever we buy off of Marion is what they buy off of us, it's an equal rate.
It's the same price.
Yes, sir.
And the, the, the gallons did not change?
Actually, um, the previous agreement had a requirement that we had to purchase a minimum set number of gallons.
Yeah.
Uh, that's been removed, so we don't have a minimum uh, amount of gallons to, of course, the last couple of years, we've far exceeded that minimum anyway, so uh, it wasn't, it wasn't a, a need to continue.
Having settled, you said in on many of these agreements, this is probably the most.
Reasonable.
Reasonable one that I've sat in on in years. I didn't feel like they were there, we're taking this on the coals.
They want to arm in the leg, most of them.
Yeah, and this year I thought, I, I thought it went well.
I was very appreciative.
Yeah, and I wanna thank the people of Town of Marion for, and I, I, I hope we all can continue to work like that together.
That's kind of looking forward to it.
All righty, that's a committee recommendation. All righty, that's a committee recommendation. Um, let me find it here. We, uh, committee made a motion to approve the proposed revisions and update the water purchase agreement as the town, with the town Marioness presented. Any more discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor signify to say aye. Aye. Any opposed likewise? Motion carries.
Next item we discussed, um, was in regards to a literary, literary loan application in partnership with the Smith County Schools. For proposed work at the Chilhawee High School for Gymnasium Bandroom Cafeteria. At Marion Senior High for an auxiliary gym and bandroom and Northwood High School for Bandroom Renovations. Uh, I, I noted that it would be my goal to utilize a potential one percent additional sales tax option to fund the repayment of the loan should that become an option in the future. Uh, Dr. Carter did point out that if the county were to apply for the loan, which could be, which would be a two percent loan up to thirty years, or tw- proposed twenty year term, we could go up to thirty years and then later choose not to proceed. We would not be penalized for withdrawing the loan application. So this is basically the way the liter- literary loan works. All the applications are put into a pot, they're scored. And the, the application with the highest score gets the first chop at the money and it goes down until the money's gone. So hopefully we'll be somewhere in the top, um, funding side. And, uh, if they come down to us and we're still not ready, they'll go to the next. And they won't spend all the money until we officially, uh, uh, withdraw or, or pull the trigger to move forward. So we're not tied up to doing anything. But it does get us into the, into the queue. Um, there is a, um, um, some base, a basic resolution that may, that authorizes the application that we, uh, need to, to, uh, go with. Um, following the discussion, Mr. Widener did make a motion to authorize proceeding with the literary loan application process in partnership with the Smith County School Board. And to approve the necessary resolution authorizing the county administrator to finalize all necessary documents. Mission was seconded by Mr. Atkins and it was approved, approved by the committee two zero one with, um, Chilhawee District Supervisor Michael Sturgill abstaining. But it, it is a recommendation from committee.
All right, committee recommendation, any further discussion? All three localities, all three towns get something out of this. It's not a, one, one project serves one, it's all three getting different things, but they all get something. Um, any more discussion?
And it's, and I would also add that it's not, the goal is not to place the burden on the real estate rate. It's that, uh, we would still have to work through a process of a one percent sales tax if that does pass. But this is the first or the next step in the process, of the long process.
Yeah.
All those in favor signify to say aye. Aye. Any opposed likewise? We have four, oh, and one.
Um, next item we discussed, uh, dealt with various fee schedule amendments that's being considered as part of the FY twenty-six budget development process. The first, um, item, first fee schedule was the water sewer fees, um, as well as the, and we also discussed, discussed the building permit fees. Regarding the u- utility fees, committee reviewed comparisons of our peer communities largely based on, uh, or looking at the connection fee, uh, where we are compared to other localities. Uh, it was noted that town of Chilhawee surprisingly has, their rates appear to be in the middle ground of our peers. And the consensus of the committee was to consider increasing rates to, um, to their amounts. Uh, following discussion, Mr. Sturgill made a motion to recommend scheduling a public hearing on June fifth at five P M or shortly thereafter. To gain public comments on increasing water sewer tap fees as discussed. Mr. Widener seconded the motion and it was unanimous recommendation from committee. Again, just another public hearing scheduled.
Good, now all we're doing is scheduling a public hearing, all, any discussion?
Could, could you just elaborate on what that is?
Yes, sir, so our current water sewer rates, uh, connection fees are eight hundred and fifty dollars. And, um, Clay, if I'm not mistaken, it was four, fourteen hundred?
For supplies.
Yeah, and it, it depended on the size, uh, a bigger meter had, had a higher amount. Mostly because the, the meters, the meter costs, uh, are so much greater as you get larger, higher from the, um, residential size.
If I remember correctly, we were going in the hole.
Uh, we're going on the hole even on residential.
I just want to make sure everybody understood.
Yes, so we're, our connection fee is a thousand. Our connection fee is eight hundred and fifty dollars and we're spending right at a thousand for the, for the materials.
The stand, yeah, yeah. And that don't include the, the labor to install.
Yeah, so we're at least hoping to try, try, try and break even on this.
At least cover the cost.
Well, because at the end of the day, I mean, you know. Just from the situation in, that Saltwell had, I mean, you know, we've really got to start looking at having things.
Sure, um, yes.
You know, but if you're, if you're losing so much money, I don't want to get too much into this because we're on a hearing, but I think, I think this is a good thing.
Oh, I don't hear still talking. Uh.
So we didn't need to vote on the motion?
All right, any, any more discussion? This is to have a hold a public hearing on June third or for June fifth?
I'll wait for it.
But it's committee recommendation, all those in favor signify to say aye. Any opposed likewise? Motion carries.
The next, next item related to building permit fee schedule, uh, we reviewed those, the, uh, similar fee schedules from other localities around the region showing the rates that each, um, locality charged. I think we're close on most of the items, uh, where sixteen cents per square foot for building permit themselves. Uh, there were many that were up to twenty cents, so the discussion was to at least consider a public hearing to, to look at going up to twenty cents on, on the building permit themselves. So following the discussion, Mr. Sturgill made a motion to recommend scheduling a public hearing on June fifth. Uh, to gain public comments on increasing building permit fees from sixteen cents per square foot to twenty cents per square foot. Mr. Widener seconded the motion that was unanimously approved as committee recommendation.
All righty, any more discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor signify to say aye. Aye. Any opposed likewise? Motion carries.
Uh, next item we discussed was the recommendation from the Public Safety Committee, uh, regarding the loan requests from Sugar Grove Fire Department for the purchase of the, um, used fire truck. Uh, following discussion, Mr. Widener made a motion to approve the Sugar Grove Fire Department's request as recommended by the Public Safety Committee. And authorize the county administrator to finalize the loan agreement as presented. Miss, the motion was seconded by Mr. Sturgill and passed unanimously, uh, committee as a recommendation.
Any, any further discussion?
Even though that is for a ten year, we have expectation that that will be taken care of. So less than.
Yes, sir, yeah, they actually, they, they wanted to make sure that that was, there was an allowance to pay it off early.
And I know that I made the recommendation and I don't know how this came through. But I still think we need to require them to have pump test and service that on that equipment as long as we are the lien holder against it. To make sure that that material or that that truck stays in working order.
Yes, sir, and that was brought up during the, during the committee meeting and as the, as that recommendation from the Public Safety Committee.
Okay.
And we'll make sure that that's part of the agreement.
Any other discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor signify to say aye. Aye. Any opposed likewise? Five oh again.
Last, final item for the Budget Committee, uh, was the, uh, review of the proposed engagement letter with the county's auditing, auditing firm Robinson Farmer Cox. Following discussion, Mr. Widener made a motion to authorize the chairman of the board and the county administrator to sign the engagement letter with Robinson Farmer Cox Associates to provide auditing services. Uh, the motion was seconded by Mr. Sturgill and passed unanimously as a recommendation from committee.
Any, uh, other discussion? I think you were talking earlier about putting stuff on our items to take to Richmond, so to speak. I think this is something that needs to be taken to Richmond too. Because they have a lot monopoly, nobody else, no other accounting firms want to do audits down here. We need to get the, all the public accounts or somebody back to somehow get, so we can do some competitive for a lot of bids.
Who done Worcester County?
What's that?
Who done Worcester County?
Probably them. They do about all of them on the interstate. And that's what I'm saying, it used to be some of the smaller firms with, you know, Brown Edwards and Company, um, couple out of Run Oak would do. They all pretty well shut, stopped doing county audits. And we need to talk to Richmond.
That's the same one every since I.
Yeah, it's been competitive.
We did a, uh, we did a RFP when I first got here and they were the only ones to submit a, a proposal.
So I think that's something we need to carry to Richmond and try to get a competitive environment again. Might help us with the price too.
Or at least if there's no competition, at least then maybe the state could step in and say, based off of X, this is the pricing structure as opposed to letting a, you know, a public company just decide what they want to do.
I don't know if Mr. Sir, uh, Mr. Atkins remembers, but at one time the state did the audits.
Yes, I remember.
So we didn't have to worry about doing it ourselves.
Any, uh, further discussion, all those in favor of Robinson Farmer Cox signify to say aye. Aye. Any opposed likewise? Like we had a choice.
That's all the Budget Committee had.
New business. Now we got to have some new businesses in Smith County, mine says none.
We'll, we'll work on that.
Okay. And I noticed next from Mr. Farin, our county attorney, any comments?
No comments this evening.
I don't know.
But you're better off if I'm not commenting much.
That sounds good too. Uh, report from the county administrator and staff.
I will ask Ms. Hayden to give us an update on the tariffs, the tariff report she put in the packet.
I, I just wanted to provide you guys some documentation and something to go off of for tariffs because it's a, a hot topic for everybody. Um, rural community statewide, United States wise, globally. So I just wanted you guys to, to be aware that our office is working on it. We're, um, I came up with a plan to, action plan should we need it for our local communities. And essentially that just involves adding additional items to our business outreach. Um, making sure we have education and partnership communities with our V E D P, with VITA. Um, and our businesses to make sure that they have lots of information, lots of support. If it comes to any type of financial assistance that they may need, just because imports could be affected, especially with companies who import steel and things like that. Um, making sure that they're connected with our trade partners at the state level and, um, making sure they're also connected to potential other supply chain, uh, partners as well. So just informational, I'm happy to answer questions if you have on it, but, um, I just wanted to make sure you guys knew that we were very interested in it, making sure our community and our businesses are well supported and well educated in it.
Are you seeing anything real negative or real positive in our area?
Not yet, but you know, we, um, the Federal Reserve President of Richmond is coming down, is it next week, I believe? Um, and we're going to do an industry roundtable. Um, and they're being very encouraging to let them speak openly about it. I haven't personally heard anything from any of our business community yet, so. But they're, they're very, um, interested in the response from certain employers in the industry like General Dynamics and, um, a couple of the ones who have steel suppliers to General Dynamics and things of that nature, so.
When we get a steel maker here.
When that happens, yeah.
Didn't I, didn't I read somewhere that Smith County is one of the ten most impacted counties in Virginia?
Yeah, that's, Cardinal News has said, they reported that. And really it just comes to being a rural community, um, a lot of rural communities across the United States are going to be heavily impacted by this. Just because, you know, we, we don't have a lot extra to support when you have a manufacturing and agriculture based industry. And supply chain gets interrupted, we've seen in COVID what that did to some of our industries. And then you add additional costs onto something like that, you know, that cuts into their profit margin and potential workforce issues. So there, there's a whole slew of issues that could happen, but we're going to be as proactive as we can be on this to make sure that we are understanding their needs before it becomes a problem.
Somebody that lives and is working on a payday basis is one of those where currently there's a lot of talk about it.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of posturing and gesturing between everybody and there's, but currently most suppliers that were importing stuff have a decent supply in the U S.
Right.
I, I know there's a lot of news about it now, but what I'm afraid is going to happen is we're really going to see something in the next three months where things are really going to pick up and start affecting people.
Mm-hmm.
And it's kind of going to get, it, it's going to die down a little bit and, and there is some deals and, and all that. And I'm not getting into, you know, the high level of that, but just from somebody that is, sits on conference calls day after, day after day about it. Is, I really think that some of these businesses, you're not going to fill it today and you're not going to fill it tomorrow.
Mm-hmm.
But in two or three months, things are going to start coming and it's.
Right.
And, and, and a lot of industries do have plans to, to bring stuff stateside.
Mm-hmm.
The only thing with that is you got to find factories, you got to increase in production, you got to hire the workforce, you got to do this, you got to do that. And some of that stuff's going to be short term eighteen months, long term,
Yeah.
you know, years before some of that stuff went.
Yeah, and, and it's not just us, you know, the whole, the whole United States, the whole world is looking at this right now. It's a very fluid environment, right, things change from day to day on this. But I will say our state as a whole is being very proactive, every conference, every phone call, everything I've been on has, has touched on this subject. And, um, they are, they're marketing themselves, we are business friendly, you know, and we want to help communities and, um, businesses as a whole. So I feel like everybody is doing all that we can at this point in time and we'll just have to wait and see. But, uh, more than anything, I want to make sure that our industry and our businesses know that we're here for them and we're going to do everything we can to help them and however it impacts them.
Sad part is in the mid nineties, they not let everything go. We wouldn't be sitting here doing this now.
I don't know if anybody noticed it or not, uh, today they announced to sign any, I don't guess it's a treaty, but it's an agreement or whatever with England. And one of the little blurbs in there, agriculture is Virginia's number one industry. And up until this point, for us to send beef into England was not allowed. That market opened up. We can now send our beef, our vegetables, or any other agriculture products to England. That's going to be a tremendous market and I think the next thing is going to be the European Union.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I think that will help that one open up. And we need markets for our beef. We have the best beef in the world and we need to get it into the rest of the world.
Prime Minister of Canada advanced today. Banned all driving of any vehicle older than a ninety-nine.
I'm being drunk.
Eliminate all, all tent on all windows. And any trucks or anything that's jacked up has to be put back.
Interesting.
It isn't.
Prime Minister of Canada that you banned in the, driving of the vehicle ninety-nine and older.
I guess I'm walking.
Well, if you ever have questions about this or think I need to be doing more on it, just let me know.
Thank you for your time.
I just have a few other things, um, there in your, in your folder, in the teams folder, I have a flyer. Um, Mount Rogers Community Services, they're sponsoring a wellness fair at now, at Hungry Mother State Park on June twentieth. I just wanted to make sure you knew about it. We, we are showing as a sponsor, I think we're providing, um, some small, um, items, but they did show us as a sponsor. And then, uh, Mr. Williams might have an update on a, a meeting he and, uh, chairman had with A U P.
Yeah, um, so someone was having an opportunity to meet with A U P yesterday. Um, they came in and, and talked to us about some legislation that's going to take effect in July. Uh, some new payment programs that, uh, they're unveiling, um, and then, and some potential funding opportunities. Uh, so they made an offer to come to the next board meeting, um, and present to the full board. Uh, so I thought it may be nice if you have any specific questions or topics you would like them to cover, uh, just let me know and I'll be happy to get those to them.
No, we've got topics.
Just let me know, thanks.
That's all I have.
All righty, we're moving right on to supervisor comment now. The very first one is Mr. Call.
Well, hello. I just thank everybody for being here and everything and our staff, of course they do a great job. Becca's done a great job, she's hit some pretty big shoes to fill, but she's doing it adequately, I think. Thank you very much. Everybody else hanging there? Be safe calling home.
Mr. Sturgill?
I just have one thing, I'll, uh, save the rest of my time for Mr. Courtney, it's easy, he has the lengthy list down there, so. Uh, just, uh, just to remind everybody that May twenty-second is Over Americans Day at the Chilhawee Town Park from nine A M. to one P M. So come out and enjoy the free food. So come out and enjoy the free food.
Yeah, we meet that night anyway, so I think that's a board meeting night, so.
We'll go on down there, Charlie.
Let's bring him here there.
Oh, yeah.
Alrighty, next is.
What's quality of the Over American?
Mr. White, I think fifty-five of them.
I'm not there yet.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just wanted to, uh, again, recognize the law enforcement week coming up, uh, at the, at the wall in DC. We do, uh, as the county have an officer whose name will be added to that wall and be recognized during the ceremonies. Um, we have officers, uh, throughout the county and, uh, families who will be traveling to DC this weekend. Uh, just ask that you keep them in your thoughts and prayers and, uh, have safe travels. Uh, this will be a very difficult time for everyone involved. And, um, you know, just like I said, just hope that, uh, they have safe travels and, and just keep them in your thoughts. Yesterday, there was a, uh, you may have seen some posts about it. It was the law enforcement united riders that had come to town. Uh, they, they started out, I, I think, uh, down in maybe Chattanooga or somewhere. But they're riding to DC and these were officers from like Tucson, Arizona and other places. Uh, it was, it, it was, uh, pretty inspiring really. And, and they stopped at our office. Uh, we didn't expect it to be exactly like it was. There were some families of, uh, law officers we had here in Smith County, um, that was present for this. And, and they read the memorials from the Officer Down Memorial page, um, of each officer in Smith County. You know, I, I don't know if many people know this or not, but we actually had a chief of police that was killed in the line of duty here in Smith County. He was a Marion Chief of Police and that was back, I, I can't remember the year, but, um, he was in an accident and I think it may have been, maybe on a, your, uh, extradition or something. But, uh, you know, so, so even, and, and I think that was one of our first ones in, in the county. So, you know, they, they read that too and, um, you know, it was just, uh, humbling and just very appreciative. These were law enforcement officers, like I said, from all of the US and keep them in your thoughts too. They're riding bikes and, and they're going, I don't know what out of the world they're doing. They're like, man, it's been rough up to this point. I said, you ain't seen nothing yet. So, so, uh, I, I, I wished them the best and, uh, and of course pray for their safety too. Um, EMS and Fire has had some things going on too this month and thank them for all they do. Uh, I want to brag for a minute. My son just passed his, uh, National Registry Paramedic and, uh, got all his firefighter stuff done and, and he's getting ready to graduate with another degree, so we're tickled to death with that. Graduation coming up with the schools. Um, I know Mr. Sturgill's probably going to be hitting on this, uh, the next meeting, but, um, but, uh, you know, we, uh, I was looking at some of the budget stuff and everything and Smith promised, we're so fortunate to be able to offer what we're able to offer these children now to, as they move, move into the world and, and have opportunities that, that none of us had. And, you know, hopefully they can take advantage of that and they can bring it back home and, and put it to use here, you know, and, and especially the trade work. The trade is so important. You know, electricians, plumbers, HVAC, all this stuff, builders, you know, we're, we're needing that here. And it pays just as good, if not better, than any high paying degree. So I just wanted to throw that out there that, uh, I'm excited for them to be taking advantage of that. And with VDOT, I, I know we could sit here and spin our wheels all day. I do, I am, uh, upset over this six-year, uh, plan. The financing options on that and how that money's not coming in or not increasing. I do think we need to make sure that we get our voices heard in Richmond through, um, our legislature and, and, and try to get something moving forward with that. Because that, that has always been a good program that has helped out a lot of people in the community. And, and to see that sort of fall to the side is, is really heartbreaking in a lot of ways. And, and, you know, for me, I, and, and I understand a, a, a budget, uh, that the state of Virginia has and, but, but you look and you see all these savings, like, look, we're saving a billion dollars this year, all right? I'm all about saving money, but at the same time, we've got people who need things and we need to be pushing that money out to, especially some of these localities in southwest Virginia. That just don't ever get the opportunities that the bigger localities have. So, uh, something else, uh, and I promise this is it. The, the, the funding for the schools, the, the projects. And in our meetings, I, I'd asked Dr. Carter, you know, and, and it just, again, coming back to the state funding, it blows my mind. There's no capital improvement funding for schools. A lot of, a lot of localities in this state, some of the bigger localities, they may not need it because they have the revenue coming in from industry and everything else. Again, southwest Virginia is being left behind and, and it really bothers me. And, you know, just like that there, I think we also need to be pushing, um, on, on our general assembly to, to try to work with us more down here in southwest Virginia. Because it, it may be a situation where, you know, they say, well, you, you know, we're, we're not going to give you all this because we need to split it amongst everybody in the state. We're on different levels. So, uh, and I know I'm preaching to the choir, but it, it just absolutely makes me sick. We have got aging schools in this county and we're having to scrape by to provide what we can for these kids. And it's not fair. It is, it is just not fair. Everybody be safe going home and thank you all for everything you did. And Becca, it's in addition to all your other stuff, I know, so, so thank you for doing what you're doing.
My pocket?
Yeah, it's real clean.
Okay. Um, shouldn't let Courtney go because I guess he makes me think, but, uh, a lot of issue, I, just quick notes I had written down, police and EMS, they never get enough recognition. They only get recognized when something goes wrong, but you gotta remember every time that those people are involved, somebody is having a bad day. So they go above and beyond to do things that most of the time they're never thanked for. So I would encourage you to always, you know, thank your fire and EMS people. Thank you for, you, your police officers. And really, if, if you don't like the job they're doing, I tell you the same thing that they used to tell, you know, I used to tell people when I refereed high school football. You got the option. Sign up. Go out there, show them how to do it better. I would encourage you to do that. With that being said, I'll throw a little love over Roscoe's Way Saltwater Fire Department this Saturday. Barbecue dinners from twelve to noon. Stop by, support your local fire EMS people. They need to fund.
From twelve to noon, you gotta do it.
I mean, noon from seven, sorry. Sorry. Noon to seven. They're all to go. Come in at twelve, leave at noon, they're all to go. But with that being said, just like when we were talking about Sugar Road, the stuff and the equipment you need is not cheap. And these volunteer stations, i- it's, it's tough when you gotta do that. So the county, when we can help, we're going to do that. But for them to pay that back every time they have something, donations, every time they sell anything, whatever. Help those localities out because that's what helps pay. And they're also the people that are responding when you crash your car, when your homework is on fire, that kind of stuff. Um, note I wrote about VDOT, they gotta do better. I mean, they have to do better. They come here, they talk, it's always, we're looking at it, we're studying it, we're doing this, you don't meet your requirements. But every person is paying taxes for those services. It's just, they, they've got to do better. And I understand that things are expensive, but that's, if, if it, as a county, we go out and start to do something to one of their roads, we're going to get in trouble for it. It is their road, the roundabout out here. It's their road, the interstate is their road. Yeah, Flint Lane is their road. You know, these people on Oak Grove that was here tonight, and I do applaud her for showing up tonight and, and, and speaking on that behalf. I put it out there, you know, we tried to put it out there that VDOT was going to be here and hopefully people will show up. And that's how you, what you have to do. You have to show up, your voice has got to be heard. You know, I've said it more than once, local politics is not a spectator sport. Everybody has to be involved in that. From us, we have to do our homework and we gotta do everything we can. But we're citizens and if there's issues and you want to some, bring something up, you've got to do it. And I go back and, you know, I know I'm giving Sean a hard time, but when we're talking about budget. From a business world, you gotta, you gotta look at what's needs versus wants. And we got people out here that want stuff and we got things we need. We need good schools, we need, we need good buildings, we need stuff. And, and, and I understand from a leadership point, we're trying to do that. We're trying to make sure that we get what we need. We, we got trash pickup, we got police, we got EMS, we got water, you, you know, you got sewer, we try to do that. I'm just, I'm just hoping everybody understands that because that's, that's what I said about tariffs. Things are expensive now, things are the way they are now, but I truly see things will, I think there's a light at the end of the tunnel, but I also think that light is years down the road. Cause anything that these tariffs do to help us is not going to happen tomorrow. So that, and I, and I understand things are going to get, I'm sure when Chevrolet, you know, opens their dealership over here, something's going to affect them tariff wise. So I'm just, you know, I would say we, as a, as a board, I will tell you, my opinion is we have to do all we can, we have to do better, we have to do. Now, we're citizens, we got jobs. This is not our full-time job. We sign up to serve and we, and, and we do. There's lots of times, lots of meetings, lots of stuff that we do above and beyond. And that's where I, once again, will challenge the citizens of Smith County. If there's things that need to be done, things that we can help with. If there's times for your voice to be heard, show up and speak out. I can't promise you we'll do it, but if we don't know about it, we can't, we sure can't address it if we don't know about it. So, um, last thing, can't believe nobody else did this. Happy Mother's Day this weekend. To all the mothers out there, we do appreciate you. Just like police and fire and EMS, you never, you never get as much recognition as you deserve. If it, you know, if it wasn't for mothers, wouldn't have any of us be here. So, you know, we do appreciate you. Still got your mother. Give her a big hug and a kiss and tell her you love her and, and we do appreciate you. So thank you for all you do. You spoke for an hour and a half.
Thank you, Roscoe.
Mon- Monday night, we had our senior recognition, awards recognition at Marion Senior High School. And thirty-one students were recognized for receiving the America, the Smith County Promise Award. That's thirty-one out of about a class of a hundred and five or something like that. That's, that's significant. You know, and, uh, without knowing the exact figures, but I was informed, probably half of those wouldn't have even, would not have even considered going to a college door. But now because we've made the promise that we've made, though they're at least going to get some classes in college. So it's, and we have other counties around us asking questions. How do we do it? What's, how's it working? So, I mean, Smith County is getting out there and getting things done. And dollar wise, for what it's, you know, one or two of those students earns an electrical, a electrical degree at Virginia Highlands and stays in Smith County, we've made money. I mean, it just takes one or two with what they'll be making and paying in the way of taxes and so forth. But I, I was very proud to have awarded those. Six-year plan and that, as I stated when they were here, they, they have gutted that. I don't know how, how else to say it. I remember years ago, we, we'd have several projects on there and they were meaningful projects. The end of the, of the Hungry Mother Road in which you're getting ready to repair it, that was a six-year project road years ago. That's how it got paved. And, you know, because it was, it was a gravel road through there many a year, but it was paved as a part of the six-year project. Something's got to be done on that. Schools talking about our school building. Some of the school buildings here in Smith County, us and I think it's Lee County, has some of the oldest school buildings in the state. I know where I went to school, where my kids went to school and where my grandkids are going to school, my mother went to school there. So that school has been around. I think the agriculture building was built in nineteen oh five. We got our money's worth out of it.
Is that the Atkins?
Yeah, there were the cafeteria. That was the agriculture building.
Wasn't that for?
We own the spring. Uh, but, uh, just the idea, the state's got to start helping us some. We, we gotta, you know, we've been fortunate to be able to build some schools and so forth, but we still have some. The upkeep on a building, building that old, you know, that needs to be turned into community center, build a decent school, but, uh, or decide what to do. And I'd like to commend this board because I think we're working for the citizens of Smith County. I don't see anybody up here running their own little agenda. I see us making decisions, fire EMS, police, the housing project. Our three million dollars we invested in housing, I think is one of the best programs we could do. You know, and when it's done ten years from now, we build a hundred and fifty, two hundred houses, we still got our three million to do something else with. So, uh, I mean, that, you know, that, that, that's something. Our sewer rates, I just want to comment on that. We talked about a little bit here tonight. Our sewer and water rates has got to start paying their own way. We cannot be using tax dollars for somebody from over in Nebo to help fund our sewer and water. Also, we, our, our dollars that we tax the citizens of town of Marion and the town of Chilwell and so, because they have their own systems. But yet they're paying real estate taxes and we're turning around and using it to help provide water to them. I can sort of understand that if you's, if you're providing water to attract the industry. But we're, we've got too big a hole in our watershed. We gotta, as much as I don't want to raise the prices, we've got to get it up towards paying for it. Cut expenses and get that where the revenue is more than expenses. So we, we've got some old lines in the ground that's going to start giving us some problems. Are we going to have to start recognizing that they're giving us problems? Maybe that's a better way to say it. And we're going to have to fund that. And, um, I want to thank, uh, Becca for stepping in like she has, and I think, uh, Kendra's still sitting over there. Thank you for your, your time and effort that you put in. Uh, I realize you gotta work with Sean all the time, but, uh,
Sorry.
It, uh, I'm just proud of the staff. I think y'all have done a good job, Sean, all the way down. So, uh, keep up the good work. And having said that, I guess I can shut up now, but thank the newspaper for being here. Give us a good report, please. And, uh, I'll adjourn this meeting.